I'll call this meeting to order for the Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission for the regular meeting Tuesday, February 22, 2022. Uh, who's here?
John Smolgin.
Andy Engel.
Lenora Palatnick.
Stacy Beavens.
Stacy, you're not part of the commission yet, so that's okay. Yeah. Who, who on the commission is here? Is Rob here?
Olivia Cody's here.
Alright, so I have John, Andy, Olivia, and Lenora, right? Anybody else?
Yeah. Olivia Cody's here.
Alright, yeah. Thank you, Olivia, for coming. Well having you. So, looks like I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna seat Olivia for Rob Horgan. So Olivia, you are a voting member, meaning you could vote.
Alright, sounds good.
Um, and I'm gonna seat Lenora for Sue. Okay, Lenora, you good?
Yeah.
For Sue Fitch. Alright, so we, we have, and I'm not missing anybody, right? We have a quorum of five. We only need three, but it's me, John, Andy, Olivia, and Lenora. Great. So we'll go on to communications with the public. Anybody from the public have anything? They want to discuss with us? Nobody? Okay, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from January 2022. Now, you can't approve the minutes if you weren't there. So you abstain if you, uh, Olivia, Lenora, if you weren't there.
And I wasn't there.
And John wasn't there.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
I'll second. Do I, do I have a do I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Olivia, were you there or no?
No, I was not there.
Okay. Lenora, were you there?
I think so.
I think you were too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't remember yesterday, so I can relate to you. Let, let's say Lenora was there, it's not a big deal. So, um, Olivia, you abstain.
Yeah.
So say it, say I abstain. Alright, so we'll have a vote. Um, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention would be Olivia.
Well, two, me, Russ.
And John. Yeah. Thank you. Oh, you were there, Lenora. Says it in the minutes. Good for us, alright. So, new business Connor Dillon, 48 Minor Bridge Road, single-family dwelling. I had no problem with this application at all, but Connor, are you here? Connor's not here, representative?
I'm here, Russ. Brian?
I didn't have a problem other than I saw cutting right up to near the stream. Luckily, it's a mounded area, so nothing they cut would impact the stream. I just wanted to know why they cut that area. I can't share my screen, but Julie.
Yes, what are you looking for?
To the left of the house, you see that little area there that's like a little square to the left of the house?
There?
That's the house, and then, oh no, that's a shed, and then go left of that. There.
That area?
Cutting, yeah, that, there was cutting in there, that area. I didn't know why. Thank you. Thank you for zooming that in. Oh, by the barn. Yeah, I, like, that dotted line, the 250 contour, I think it's 250, I'm getting old, it's hard to see, 235. That was all cleared out. But there's a mound there. So I'm not concerned by, about the impact, but I'm concerned about what are they planning to do there? Brian?
Not sure why he cut that. There's really no proposal to do any grading in that area. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure why he would have cut that.
Yeah, they clear cut it.
It kind of went a little overboard or something.
Okay, and there's, there's a, the land goes up after that, so it's not like I'm worried about the stream, but obviously I would like to know why that was cut, what's the plan, why, you know? I, I see where the barn is, I see where the house is, I don't have a problem at all with the proposed plan, which I hate to put him off another month, but I, I need to know why that was cut.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly, because he doesn't need to cut that to do the barn.
Alright, I'm emailing Sierra, because she was with me, to see if she could join.
I can text Connor and ask if he can come to the meeting.
Yeah, Connor might be thinking the meetings at 7:30.
It's John Cody. Andy, I already did, I texted him to see if he can call in already.
Okay, good. Then I won't.
I, I don't have a problem with this whole plan. It's a flat thing, uh, land trust backs it up, very special swamp, it was an enjoyable, uh, sidewalk to see the swamp and things are good. Sierra's coming on, but, yeah, she said 7:30? Um, I, I don't know. I'll leave it up to the commission. Should we approve this and then get that information later? Uh, I hate to hold them up another month.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna make a difference, Russ, but I, I think he needs to be told that, uh, you know, that that's a regulated area and that there shouldn't be any more cutting in there.
Yeah, that's my point, John. And again, it's like this ball, so the land goes way up. It's mostly a five, 10-foot berm that wasn't created, it's the land before the stream, so it didn't, it didn't affect the stream, uh, but I'd like to just know.
Ross, it's John. If you'd like, I can reach out to him tomorrow and discuss that.
Okay. Um, anybody on the commission have a question? Olivia? Anybody? No?
Where the cutting is going uphill?
I can't really hear you.
The cutting you said is going uphill, correct?
No, the cutting was in a low area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, if nobody has any objections, I will make a motion to approve this as a regulated activity because they did go into a regulated area, and the barn's close, but they still cut beyond that. I'll prove this as a regulated activity. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? With none, all, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next. Next application. Yeah, they're back out of this.
This is the 308 Southbury Road.
Is this new business?
No, this is old business from last month still.
Oh, I think Rob was the one who was supposed to go there. Bring up the map. Is anybody here for this?
Yeah, I'm here, Russ.
Thanks, Brian. Uh, I'm gonna text Rob because we're all getting used to the new.
That's it right there, that's the plan.
Alright, I texted this. Um, why don't we move on? Because it's important, he did the sidewalk. I think we go to new business, right?
This is new business, and this is going to be 152 South Street.
Okay, is somebody here for this?
Yes, Jim McTagg, professional lands surveyor with Arthur Howland Associates. How's everybody doing this evening?
Hi, Jim. So what's the plan, Jim?
So, um, it's a simple application, we want to remove some dead, dying, and diseased trees in upland review areas down near South Street. And we're gonna be cutting the trees down, but, uh, cutting the stumps flush with the ground.
Go closer, Julie.
And we will be removing all the wood chips.
Did they already do some of this?
Not to my knowledge.
Alright, because somebody on South Street, I know, they, they, we approved this a couple of months ago, and I'm just wondering if it's the same party. And this is 252?
This is 152 South Street.
And they want to take down?
16, looks like about 16 trees.
Okay. Where on South Street is this, Jim? Um, is this like near Squire Road or way up?
You know, unfortunately, I don't know the town that well to be able to articulate that to you.
Okay, that's alright.
Yeah, it's right near Squire Road, if you, um, basically across from Rob's barn.
Ah, is this, who's the applicant?
The Adams, you know the Adams.
Denise Adams.
Oh, Adams, so it's, it's up from Rob's barn, okay. And, and I know the land well. Uh, and they want to take down trees that are dying and disrepair?
Yeah, they are, they are dying, deceased, and/or dead.
Yeah, I could agree with them. I drive by it every day. Um, okay, commissions.
It feels almost like a maintenance activity.
Yeah.
Just giving us 18 trees, yeah.
I agree. It's a maintenance activity. Um, John could have approved this, uh, but that's alright. It's better he doesn't. So he doesn't get in trouble. Pardon, John?
I didn't know this was on the agenda, it just showed up, um, just came in the other day. Yeah, I, I, if I'd known this, because in the application they say they're gonna do it all by hand, I would have approved it.
Yeah. So I'll look for somebody to make a motion to approve this.
I've motioned that we approve this as a maintenance activity.
Do I have a second?
Aye, second.
Who's that?
Olivia.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So carries. Thank you, thank you, Jim.
Thank you. I'm also representing the next two applications.
Okay, let's go to the next. And Rob says he can't join. I'm gonna say you did, uh, site as I hate spell check. I'm writing, "You did a sidewalk," and it's saying, "You did adore you."
Yeah, go with it.
I do adore him.
Just roll with it, Russ.
"You did a sidewalk." Any? Okay, let's go on. Is this a new one?
It's a new application.
It's Jim, right?
Jim, yes.
Jim, you're busy, Jim.
Yep, yes, we are.
You're calling a new Brian F. Are you new to Arthur Howland, Jim?
Yes, I am. I joined back in July.
Alright.
I'm not finding a map for this one, for 84 Good Hill Road.
I can share my screen if necessary.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
You have to stop sharing before I can share mine.
There you go, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yep. Jim, Jim, for the record, state your name, who you're with, and the address of the application.
Sure thing. Jim McTagg, professional lands surveyor with Arthur Howland Associates, representing Stone Ledge Sand LLC of 84 Good Hill Road in Roxbury.
Alright, so that's Route 133?
I don't know the answer to that.
317, Russ.
Yeah, 317.
Uh, yeah, I'm thinking bridge water, sorry. I do both. So this is, uh, Good Hill Road is Route 317 on the way to Woodbury. And what's the proposal?
So there, uh, currently, there's an existing pond here that is, that has silted up. And we just simply want to dredge the existing pond uh, to make it deeper, but maintaining the same surface area.
Where will the spoils go?
The spoils are gonna be spread up in the top right corner of the page here. Um, the, uh, the spoils are gonna be spread, um, in a field opposite the tennis court. Uh, it's gonna be spread out over the lawn. Uh, and, uh, is well away from any wetland areas.
Why is the pond silted up? Is this, uh?
It's just an old, uh, property. Um, you know, it's got a water courses coming through it, and it's just a small pond that is just, over time, has silted in, and we want to restore some viability to it by, uh, cleaning it out, making it deeper.
So you have a stream going through it? Are you gonna drain it first?
Um, what we're gonna do is, on the screen here.
In other words, Jim, would you explain the construction sequence, like what, what happens, number one? That, that way the commission understands.
Right, so, um, over here, we're gonna provide, uh, sandbags with silt fences, staked hay bale uh, as a barrier to block the stream off. Uh, we're then gonna have a pump uh, in this area here, that's gonna drain, it's gonna pick up the, the, the water coming into the work construction area, and we're gonna drain it past the spillway over here temporarily while we're under construction.
Okay.
Also, at the same time, we're gonna have another pump over here to the right.
Okay, yeah.
That's gonna drain the pond, and we're gonna drop that over the spillway into a silt sack over here.
Good for you.
So this, this will take care of bypassing the water, and then the second pump will drain the pond. Uh, and then we can excavate excavate the pond, deposit the, the spoils over by the tennis court in the open field, well away from any other wetlands on the property. Uh, and then do our work, uh, and then we wanna, um, and then we're gonna, um, you know, have a much more viable, healthy pond, uh, with a, with a greater depth that will take us through the, you know, the next several decades.
Absolutely. Is this Dustin Hoffman's property by any chance?
I don't know the answer to that. The property was recently transferred, these are new owners.
Alright, uh, we should take a look at this, because it's kind of a, it is, it's not gonna be denied, that's what I'm saying. It's a maintenance activity, but the commission has a right to take a look at it. If anybody on the commission feels we should just approve this, I'm all ears. I'm not the commission. All you guys and girls, what do you think? I, I'd like to take a look at it. Nobody's doing this right now, right, Jim?
I have a sidewalk. Yeah.
We would like to start construction immediately before the spring growth emerges. Just to make you aware.
Good point, good point.
Well, if we looked at it right now, we could approve it at the March meeting.
Yeah.
Is that too late, Jim?
No, I, that, that, when is the March meeting?
The fourth Tuesday of the month.
That, that'll be fine.
Alright, then we, we will go out and look at this. Um, let the owners know we need access, we don't want to bother them, we don't really need to meet with them, it's better if we don't.
Okay.
We just like, you know, have an email to let them know when we're coming out.
Sure thing.
Just have, I don't know if this is gated and that kind of stuff.
I'll find out. Um, do you need a representative from my office there?
Not at all, not at all, and it's better we don't. It's better we just go look and we all in public, report back what we saw.
There, okay.
Uh, hey, Jim, are you, is the area that you're gonna put the spoils down, is that staked or something, so we know just where it is?
Uh, it is not stakes, um, but you do have the reference of the tennis court there, and it's an open field. We could put some stakes out if you require.
Yeah.
No, I, I, yeah, you agree it's a pond.
Yeah, yeah.
No, 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 I was talking about where the spoils are going, Russ, but yeah.
Good idea. Yeah, no, I agree with him. Could you just put two stakes there so we could see?
Sure, we can stake the, the spoils area.
Yeah. And again, we, we respect owners' rights, so however, if they want to need it.
The house is currently empty, so, um, um, when do you guys think you'll be able to go out to the site?
Well, I'll probably go out, um, depending on weather, maybe Saturday with, with my buddy Sierra, if Sierra's available.
Saturday, so, okay, I can have a, um, the spoils area staked by Saturday.
Alright, if you need more time.
No, that'll be fine. That'll be fine.
Okay. I'm wondering if the commission would approve this, um, now, pending, because we don't, we don't need, we need to wait 15 days for a public notice period. Um, but, we could go look at it, and if, if we don't have a problem with it, why wait? Um, how about approving it now contingent upon the site investigation? If there's issues during the site investigation, it would have to come to the March meeting. But if there aren't, it gives them two weeks sooner to, to get going.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
Alright, so John, would you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this application, uh, contingent on the, um, site inspection.
Second.
Who's, Lenora, you second it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Um, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ross, if anyone has any issues, they can just send me a quick email, and I can relay that information to the applicant.
Okay, um, alright, Rob just texted me, unfortunately, he's got a personal issue. He didn't do the sidewalk. Brian, are you on that? Are, are you the one on that project?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on that, Russ.
Do they have a problem waiting another month? If they do?
Well, they're not gonna break ground tomorrow anyway, it's not the right weather time to do that.
Okay.
I'm gonna put it off for a month, it's not a big deal.
Alright, we'll go look at it then. It's best we go look at it, it's a regulated, regulate it, so.
Yeah, it's all staged.
Alright, thanks, Brian, and we apologize, it's not Rob's fault at all.
No problem.
Okay, I'll go look at that.
I can take a look too, Russ, I mean, that's right around the corner from me.
It is?
Yeah.
Alright, Andy, it's, it's all yours, buddy.
Okay.
It's all yours.
Wherever it is.
Yeah.
Right by the dead skunk, actually, in the middle of 67, but.
Lot of those lately.
Yeah.
Alright, next is, uh, I can't read it. Could you make it bigger or?
Julie's playing with your.
Oh, are, are, is this the same one?
I'm having, I have to keep unmuting myself, because as soon as I start talking, the dogs are barking, so I apologize. Um.
Put those dogs outside.
I can't. It's, they're, we're already wringing water out of their coats. They're soaked.
I, I've bathed it RJ three times today, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, Andy, this is Painter Hill Road, and, um, Samansky once again. So, let's see what we have, what they're looking.
What number, Painter Hill?
There is no number.
Okay.
So I think I do have a map for this one.
It adjoins the previous property, to give you some frame of reference, this is, uh, the northwest of, uh, west of the previous property that you just saw.
Okay.
Also owned by the same people.
So, Jim, this is on top of Painter Hill?
Uh, this is, uh, on the slope, on the eastly side of Painter Hill, and the backside of this abuts the previous property at 84 Good Hill.
Before you get to Toplands, I've noticed some flagging up in, up in there.
Oh, so if you're driving from Roxbury up towards, um, Good Ridge Road or?
Topland Farm?
Ridge, Ridge, yeah, Topland Farm. Yeah, then this is on the right-hand side.
Yes.
Alright, because, um, Mr. Deepball did call me some time ago about this.
So.
Is it, is it Deepball as the applicant, or, oh no, it's probably the buyer, right, or the potential buyer?
Yeah, no, it's the, um, the Stonehead Sam LLC.
Okay.
Is the owner.
This is, if I, if I'm heading up Painter Ridge Road, it's on my right before Topland Hills, Hills Farm, right?
Yes.
Topland Farm, right, okay, I know it, alright, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, again, it's Jim McTagg, professional lands surveyor with Arthur Howland Associates, uh, representing Stone Ledge Sam LLC, Painter Hill Road.
And who are they, a potential buyer or?
They own it.
They own it, okay, thank you.
Same as the other property, uh, at 84 Good Hill Road, it's the same owner of both properties.
Okay, thank you.
And then this application is basically for a single-family residence, uh, with a new driveway.
Okay. Just a driveway?
This is the driveway.
If there's no house right now, it's just?
No, there is a house. There is a house. If you flip to the adjoining pages.
Oh, I see, okay. So let's start with the driveway. It's a steep slope. Uh, what's on, what's on the, what are we doing on the road, right at the road? What's the drainage there?
Um, we're, the, there's several things, there's lots going on here with the wetlands, as you can see, there's, there's some water courses and some dry swales. The one in the center is a, is a pretty major water course. Uh, and you see the two large wetlands, and then we have these.
Yeah, I see them. Yeah, and they're connected.
We have these dry. You have these dry swales that come down the slope towards the road. So we're trying to mimic the existing flow and we're, we're matching that. Uh, and so in various places, um, uh, you know, starting at the road to the right, we have a rain garden.
Yeah.
Um, with a, with an overflow that we're going to connect to, uh, the, the catch basin in the road. We're, we're coming in the town standard. The town standards are, are, are what's controlling, um, the grading. And, and just so that you know, before I get too far, we did consider an alternative of coming up the middle of the property. Cutting to the right, you know, by the two stockpile areas and coming up around the southerly side of the upper wetlands. Um, but we, uh, we felt that this current layout was a better, um, uh, alternative. To the one that I just described, um, in this current layout that you're seeing right now, it's a twelve-foot wide driveway. At no point is it.
Jim, one minute, and I'm sorry, it's Zoom. Julie, could you, could you go in further? Because I, it's hard to see. I want to see details. Um, down by the road? Thank you. So Jim, I, I see what you're talking about. You, you could come up and go around that wetland straight up. But that looks like it's all steep slopes.
It's deep slope. In the center, it gets even steeper. Like, you know, that other driver you're talking about, we come in the middle, we got to cross that very steep slope. Before it starts easing as we, as we climb up the hill. So this turned out to be a better location where we're starting. We're coming in the four or five percent that you guys require.
Right, but Jim, on, on the road, what, what, I want to start from the bottom and move my way up. What's, what's on the road? The, obviously a culvert needs to be put in, right?
Um, the, um, we're, as you can see further up, we're, we're doing a trench drain along the. High side of the cut, the left side of the driveway as you're looking at it.
I see it.
And then we're intercepting that water and we're sending it to the, uh, the rain garden.
I see, okay. So there won't be water flowing out onto the road is what my worry. Okay.
No, that.
And other people on the commission, please, please, it's not all me, please ask as you go. I'm just, um.
Can we zoom in on this map a little more so we can actually read some of the details?
Yeah, a little more and, and let's start on the bottom because it's a big map. One more hit.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, so starting out the road, we're coming in. Uh, and you're seeing, uh, on the left-hand side, we're going to have a twenty-four inch stone trench all the way down the left-hand side to pick up any. Groundwater that might weep out of the cut. Uh, and we're going to feed that into the rain garden. The rain garden's going to have a high level overflow, which then feeds into the town catch basin.
What if the rain garden's only designed for an inch of rain though, right?
Well, the, uh, it's, it's doing a stormwater infiltration and water quality.
And what storm event does that, does that?
Designed, we've designed all the drainage on the site for a hundred-year swamp.
No kidding. All right. What about where the driveway meets the road? What prevents water and ice? If right now I'm seeing. Water coming out of driveways that are turning ice and it's a big problem for the town because we got to go sand those.
There's a small amount that, that's going to head towards the road, but we're intercepting everything further up. So the first forty or fifty feet, um, will drain towards the road. However, we are intercepting all the water, uh, above that.
So there shouldn't be any water coming out on the road?
No, no more than that currently comes to the road now.
But what about a trench across the driveway where it meets the road? What they call pardon me, ma'am, as you know.
Um, the, um.
Do you feel it's not needed?
I feel that it's not needed, yeah.
Okay. It's something we'll look at when we go out there, Jim. We're not making a decision tonight, obviously.
As we go further up, you'll see on the left-hand side for, you know, a good hundred and fifty feet, we have twenty-four inch.
Go up, Julie, go up now. Let's move upward.
And then you see on the right-hand side, we're switching to the right-hand side and that's going to come down to a level spreader. So we're, we're going to be intercepting, um, the water from the cut. And, and, and our water, and it's going to head down towards, um, you know, it's going to mimic sheet flow. Uh, and then where we're collecting it, it's going to head down towards the rain garden. And then in addition to that, for these, um, for these. Dry watercourses, we're providing a bypass pipe. So we're, we're armoring it, uh, with, uh, with riprap into a pipe to just allow those courses to continue to do what they've always done. Without interrupting them. And then we're, we're going up and we're curving around and as you can see, we're kind of almost. Like, we're, we're getting close to grade, but we go back into another cut as we swoop back around. And then we're just crossing the field. We got a couple, we got three more watercourses. That we're going to be traversing. And protecting, uh, and will allow the water to pass through and to continue doing what it has been doing.
Jim, that wetland there, that big one there, um, what is it? Is it just wetland swamp? What kind of?
It's wooded, it's wooded area.
Okay, wooded area that's wet.
Yes.
Yeah, soils.
Of, uh, of, of being a wetland soil, uh, but it's, but it is wooded.
And all that water, I see through streams going into it, is all going into that, right?
Yeah, the, uh, you know, you can see there's, you know, one, two, three, four, it's like six watercourses that are draining that area.
Yeah.
Uh, and so we're providing every time we cross it, we're providing a culvert to, to, to allow the water to pass, not interfere with it. And as we go further up the hill on this left side, we're doing another twenty-four inch trench down to a level spreader. Get that water back into the ground. And then we go further up the hill as you're going. And as you can see, the cut is not so bad in this area. And then we could jump to the next page if everybody's ready. Okay, now here we are, we're, you know, getting around the wetlands and coming back up the hill. And as you see, the, the, we're kind of cutting and balancing out so it doesn't, um, you know, sort of. Kind of matching the grades from side to side. And then we're curving back up till we get up to the house site.
Yeah.
And it's a four-bedroom house. We're doing a cultech system right there off the house. Uh, uh, to, to pick up the water from the house and we're doing a four-bedroom septic.
Uh, Julie, could you go back down to where curves around the wetlands there, please?
And Julie, you're doing an awesome job. I gotta tell you, you're really good at this.
So, so Jim. So right there?
Put it for a raise.
Jim, how close are you to the wetlands there around that curve?
Uh, hang on. The, uh, we're about fifty-four feet from flag eighty-two. We're about forty-seven feet from flag eighty-one. All right. About thirty-five feet from flag, the next flag up, eighty. Okay. And then as you can see, there's another water course over to the left. So we're kind of just trying to cut through between the other water course and the wetlands.
Yeah.
So kind of balance it out.
You have a driveway pull-off there, it looks like?
Yes.
Is that like a dead man's escape in the winter or something like that?
I hope not.
Runaway truck ramp?
You know, it, it, the driveway's twelve feet wide, so if, you know, somebody's coming down, somebody's coming up, there's a, there's a couple of places for pull-offs. You'll see one in, uh, the middle of the screen also.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Basically, this is going to be the guest house for the adjoining property.
And Jim, is this all staked out? The driveway, the house, where the septic's going, blah, blah, blah?
Uh, don't know the answer to that. Uh, I, I'll have to find out and get back.
Get back to us because we need to do a site walk. Obviously, it's required.
Sure. When would you like to do your site walk?
Well, you tell us when it's staked and then I'll set that up.
Okay.
And the owners don't have a problem with us just going there, right?
No, this, the property's empty, so go there anytime.
It's always easier if we don't need to meet somebody. It's hard when you got to set dates and times for us.
Okay, so I'll, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll find out when we can stake the driveway in the house. Uh, and, uh, get back to you guys, let you know when you can do your site walk.
Get back to Karen. She'll let me know. And anybody on the commission. Who wants to go look at this should, should go look. And it's a complicated application. This is one we all. Should take a hike with our dogs on Sierra. Um, the more the better. That way you can make a better decision.
Yep.
Any questions from the commission? Anybody on the commission? Remember, people who aren't seated get still ask questions. When a, a motion comes up, that's when the people who aren't seated. Can no longer ask questions or, or contribute. So, just because you're not seated, you're, you're part of this commission. But wh- when a motion comes up, it's only the voting members who could, who could comment and have a discussion. Any, any questions? So I think we need, we need to all do a site walk. Uh, don't do more than two because three is a meeting and that requires a notice and blah, blah, blah. So. All right, thank you very much, Jim.
All right, thank you for your time tonight, everybody.
Yep, okay.
And I'll be in touch. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, our next one is sixty-seven Mallory Road.
New home.
New home.
It's, it's this one been before us before and they kind of backed out?
Yes, that's correct, yep.
All right, and I went and looked at it and. Uh, it's a beautiful property, but the driveway is cut in right now. And, um. Where they dug down to get the utilities is full of water. And there's a real issue at the end of the driveway where it meets Mallory. Because there's all kinds of water coming out that, when I did my site walk, I said that there needs to be. And there's a stream right there at the bottom of the driveway, if you could focus in on that. You see the stream, gang? It's right there?
Yep.
And then the bottom. Uh, to the, to the downside, which is to the bottom of the, of the drawing, right there. Uh, there's a hole that somebody dug, I think. For utility reasons and it's just full of water. And as you go up, there's holes dug all the way up, full of water. And it's not, it's not the groundwater. It's, there's a high water table here, very poorly drained soil. So any water that runs out doesn't go anywhere. Um, my report when this was first came in was concerned about the intersection with Mallory. That needs to be fixed. Uh, going up on the right side where it says swale, the swale is insufficient, in my opinion. To really be functional. It's filled in over the years. Um. And I felt there, there is. Uh, there is a way here, but it needs a, it needed a better plan and hopefully this is it. So who, who's representing on this?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
You hear you. Says you, Brew?
Yep, I, I'm Patrick Brew. For some reason.
I was gonna meet you, I guess, gonna meet you somewhere, but, okay, Pat, welcome to Roxbury Wetland Commission. Are you an engineer or are you the one who owns this?
No, so, uh, yep, I own it. Kurt couldn't make it tonight and Leo.
Again?
Again, and Leo, who's the builder, his dad just passed away, so he was unable to make it tonight. So it's. I'm by myself again.
All right, and we don't want to waste any more of your time. Because you've already waited months and I know the engineers are busy. It's tough out there. I get that.
Um, I just wanted to say that, uh, all those holes were covered and, uh, Leo put some.
Are the utilities in, Pat? Why do they dig those holes?
Yep, so that was from a nineteen eighties, uh, when, when Wayne, who was the original owner, uh, dug those trenches and installed those PVC pipes. But, uh, they don't meet today's standards, so those will have to be removed. So.
No kidding?
Yep.
So, so you got to dig a whole new trench?
Yes, sir.
And that's on the uphill side? Okay, I see it. You, you know that where you say row of fence posts, it's very wet right there. It's, it's. I mean, the driveway was all mud at that point.
Yes, yep.
What are, what are they going to do when it, when they dig these trenches? They're going to have them full of water?
Yep, I, so I know Kurt did this new engineer plan, um, as per the town's re- request. So there's. There's a couple of, or there's one trench box there at the bottom. And, uh, I know that. Once they work, there's going to be, um, hay bales there at the end of the driveway at the end of each day. And then the swale at the end, there's, originally they, they talked about like a plunge pool, but. Kurt opted for a concrete level spreader with riprap on both sides at the end of the swell there.
All right. You know, Pat, it's best that we, we set up a site walk. And now the next meeting Kurt's got to be here.
Okay.
Because you're not an engineer and I got questions that you're not going to be able to answer.
Right.
Um, and I want to hold him responsible if he's the PE. And I don't want to hold you responsible. You're probably paying out the nose. For engineering because this is taking a lot of engineering. But once I got around the corner, I had no issue. With the building site. It's a beautiful site.
Yep, I know he added the, uh.
Are you from here, Pat?
Originally, I'm from New York City, from the Bronx.
Right, and where are you living now?
I'm in, uh, Davenport Road. I used to live on Shallowbees Road West, but we sold the house, so I'm on Davenport Road now.
Yeah, so you know how great a town it is.
Oh, absolutely.
It's a great lot, great lot.
He, he did add the infiltrators as per your request. I remember that.
Okay. How big's the house?
It's thirty-four hundred square feet.
Okay, not, not crazy. Are, do you, do you have any plans to cut trees for a view?
No, no.
Okay, so you want to be hidden? Because I think you got a little view up there, but. I'm not sure I'd cut them. Because then you're looking down on Wayne. And we don't want to be looking down on Wayne.
No, I, I can barely see anyone, even in the winter.
Yeah, great, great, Pat. Welcome, well, well, not welcome to town, but, um. I think it's best we, I set up a site walk. It's everything, I don't need things staked. I know it. I'll go back and look at it.
Okay.
I'll bring another member with me who cares to go and, um. We need to have Kurt here at the next meeting, the fourth Tuesday in March. He's got to be here.
Got it.
Or, or we're not going to be able to go anywhere because we got to have the engineer, uh, to ask questions. I hope you understand that.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, all right, thanks, Pat.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, have a good night.
You too.
Okay, thirty-six Mallory Road. Um, Stacy Babbins.
Mallory, Mallory's building up here. There's nothing left on Garnet, I guess.
Nobody wants to live on Garnet, Russ. They know the neighbors.
Have you ever tried to come up it during the winter?
I've ridden my bike up it.
In the winter?
Yes.
No kidding? Yeah, we've had a very hard winter on Garnet. It freeze over, then it became a mud hole, then it freeze over. It's been a very hard winter. So Brian, where's this?
Well, it's kind of toward the bottom of Mallory Road. There's an existing driveway that comes off the road. It's been there for quite a while.
It's on the left?
Yeah, if you're going up the hill, it's on the left-hand side.
Right, and there's a land trust property near it, right?
Uh, in that, yes.
Huh?
Behind, you know, in the back of the property.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I know it. I know the driveway, yep.
So the idea is to extend that driveway, build a pretty modest house, put in a septic. Um, it's kind of in a high and dry area away from wells and water courses. So it's a pretty modest proposal for construction.
Yep. Any wetland issues, Brian?
Well, the Pierce Brook is behind the house, pretty far back.
Yeah, I know it.
Here for that. There's a smaller intermittent water course that's, uh, somewhat near the septic area, but we're holding a more than a hundred feet away from that to put in the peaching field. So there's no disturbance of well and regulated area on this at all.
Okay, we'll go look at it. Uh, is it staked?
The house is staked out, uh, the driveway, you can see the path.
Yep. And the septic? Just all I need is one, one, uh.
Yes, straight down. I can put stakes in for the septic.
Yeah, just one stake. So I have a general idea where it's going.
Also, this is Stacy, but I'd love to know when you're going so we can meet you. We have, uh, uh, concerns about our dogs and stuff. So I don't, I, it's better for me to know when you're going to be there.
Okay, you own this, Stacy?
Yep.
Okay, um.
I'm very easy. I'm local. So like, if you're going to swing by, you call me, give me, you know.
That would be great, Stacy. So would you, I don't want you to say publicly your text to your cell phone. Would you just send Karen your cell phone number or is it on the application?
It's probably on the application.
All right, that's fine. I will, I will, um, Brian will let land use know when the septic stake and then I will contact you, um, with when we can meet. I live right up the road and I know it well, you know?
Okay. Yeah, actually my daughter Tessa and her husband Mike are, are doing the project, but, uh, just long as one of us and we'll, we'll figure that out.
Yeah. And what dogs are they, they loose or?
Oh, I like to have my dogs loose all the time. I have, um, we have a pair that came from Africa with my daughter when she came back from, uh, Peace Corps.
Well, the reason why I asked is I take my RJ with me everywhere and he does all his site walks with me.
Well, then it's even more important that we know and then we make sure we're not there with our dogs.
Okay. All right. Cause.
I only got one that can manage that situation.
All right. RJ is the sweetest golden retriever you've ever met in your life.
Yep. And they might do okay, but I have two very aggressives.
Yeah. Okay. All right. That's good. Thanks. Yeah. Don't, don't want to get in any trouble. Okay.
Hey, Russ, does that mean you can't walk with anybody else if you got RJ with you? Cause then it's a meeting?
Could be true. Have to check with Gail on that. RJ's been to more, uh, site walks than anybody I know. So, thanks. All right. Thanks, Stacy. Look forward to meeting you.
Absolutely. I'll make sure you have my number. If you have any trouble, I can email.
I, I'm sure on the application, we, we could get ahold of you.
Excellent.
All right. Thank you, Stacy. All right, next. We're done? Wetland Enforcement Officers Report. John, are you here? No? All right, I, I, huh?
I'm here. I couldn't hit the mute button.
No, nothing to report, John?
Um, no, I just submitted a written report. If you want to go over that, there's nothing outstanding. Uh, we do have next month, the, um, Earth and Dan, those are erected. I'll get in touch with him to have him, uh, attend. But nothing new.
Okay. So on that, I made a mistake last meeting. I talked about Joe Coranta. Well, John reported back to us that Joe Coranta wanted to build a farm pond. And I made comments about that, that I shouldn't have because it wasn't on the agenda. And I made assumptions that I shouldn't have, and that wasn't fair to Joe and his wife Meredith, who I, I really like Meredith a lot. Joe, Joe's a good guy, but I like Meredith better. Um, and I didn't mean to offend them. I did call Joe. I did apologize to Joe. Then I followed up with an email to Joe and promised Joe and Meredith that I would do it publicly. Um, you know, I shouldn't be talking about potential, um, applications and making assumptions that they were going to put the pond in the stream. And they were using agricultural exemption when maybe or maybe not. So it wasn't fair to them. And when I'm wrong, I, I don't hesitate to say to people I'm wrong. And I was wrong and I apologized. And so with that, uh, we'll move on and I won't do it again. I promised Joe and Meredith that. Um, they're good people and I didn't mean to upset them in any way and, and they were upset. But I think I fixed it. Um, that's why going forward, we're going to have on the agenda, Wetland Enforcement Officers Report. And then a chairman's report. So I could report on things and it being on the agenda. So Joe and Meredith helped me correct that issue because we've been, we talk about things that just reporting to the commission and it really should be on the agenda. So I thank them for that. So with that, I want to remind the commission that at six o'clock tomorrow night, there is a, uh, a meeting to talk about the woods appeal. We will go into executive session about a potential, um, I, well, I don't know. I can't talk about it. We need to go into executive session. And then we will come out of this executive session and vote whether whatever Gail presents to us. So that's at six o'clock and I need at least three members there. And I think Andy's, you said you're going to be there. Uh, John has to abstain because he abstained from the, uh, from the application. Um, Sue can't make it. So it's me, Andy. And who else? Somebody else said?
I said, yes.
Uh, Rob, Rob said he'd be there, but I gotta check because Rob may not, um. So I need to make sure that some of the alternate members are there. Lenora, Sierra.
I'll be there.
All right.
I replied, I said I would be there.
Yeah, because we have to vote because there's going to be a court hearing, I guess, very soon. And they need to know what the commission thinks of whatever it is that is coming before us on the appeal. And, and solving the appeal. Second thing after that, not wetland related, is a, uh, selectmen meeting on Wellers Bridge Road and whether we should be putting speed bumps or, um, traffic calming measures on Wellers Bridge Road. So if you're interested as a resident of Roxbury, you might want to join that one. And then Thursday night at seven o'clock, there's a public hearing, uh, I'm sorry, a, uh, town meeting to vote on the recent things that the Board of Selectmen approved. That would be, uh, you can't sell pot in town, you can't smoke pot on town property. And we put together a COVID.
What are we supposed to do, Russ?
Smoke it in your house, Andy. I don't want you, I don't want my kids seeing you do that.
Does this mean that the market, does this mean the market won't be able to have Wayne's weed?
Not at all. No. No, Wayne will have to move to whoever decides because most towns are doing the same thing. It's too bad the state chose this, but that's okay. And then Thursday night, there's an, uh, town meeting to approve that and to approve the COVID funding that the town put together. That's the money that the feds gave us. It was a lot of money. I forget how, do you remember how much, Julie?
Thirty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, Andy knows. And, uh, I'm proud to say I, I've fought hard to get the land trust five grand and to get the Sheparg River Valley Association, Association, five grand to continue to monitor water barriers treatment of the river, which as the chairman of that, uh, they're doing a great job. And it's big turnaround in water here. They really care about the river. I'm proud of that. So, um, that's it. Does anybody have anything else? I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. Ball of favor?
Aye.
Enjoy the snow Friday.
Yep. See you Thursday.